Okay, so this is the Transportation Committee Wednesday, August 5. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one, this is our second time discussing it, is Ordinance 2012, which is relatively routine amendments to Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, so traffic vehicles and traffic. And this includes some items like loading zones, no parking zones, motorcycle parking, adding a temporary visitor permit, among other things. Second ordinance is 20-14. And this is again to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code and is to reflect a proposed redesign of 7th Street, known as the 7 Line. So for both ordinances tonight, we'll hear from staff come to council for questions, go to the public for comment, and then back to council for a discussion and then potentially taking a poll on whether we want to recommend these ordinances to council next week, or if we need any further debate, at least on the 7 Line ordinance. Well, I think we also might have some amendments to introduce tonight. We'll just, we'll see what happens, right? I might introduce an amendment about motorcycle parking. And we can go from there, okay? Speed, Councilmember Volan.
Madam Chair, yeah, are we going to have separate votes on each ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So first we'll do ordinance 2012, and then we'll do 2014.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so let's begin discussing ordinance 2012, amending Title 15 of the code, vehicles and traffic. We heard from staff last week, and I think this week, let me see. Okay, yes, so this week we've got two staff members present, I think, to weigh in on this. So if we, we've got Mr., let me see where I've got my guys, I'm sorry. Amir Farshid and Long Range Planner, and Emile Copper, Senior Project Engineer. So I guess where we left off, we had some updates to this. And I'm thinking, would it make sense to have staff go through these updates and small edits and changes, and we can ask questions again? Does that sound good? Okay, just a little overview again, okay. So Mr. Farshid, do you want to go ahead and talk about the updates over the past week?
Hello, this is Amir Farshid, Long Range Planner. Let me share my screen with you, if that is okay.
Yeah.
Could you see my screen, just to make sure?
Yeah, yeah, we see it, we see it.
Okay, great. So as a reminder, staff presented the Title 15 ordinance in the Transportation Committee meeting two weeks ago, I think, on July 22, 2020. The ordinance proposes various amendments to Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, about adding, removing, and changing some items regarding no parking zones, loading zones, parking restrictions for motorcycles and mopeds, garage parking reserved for electric vehicles, temporary visitor parking permit program, limited parking zone, speed limits, intersection, runway streets, and changing a street name. The details and maps are included in the council packets. And for tonight, staff prepared four amendments to ordinance 20-12 to correct errors contained in the original legislation. Let me talk about all amendments. So the amendment one, which is submitted by a staff and is in search of a sponsor, is related to the Section 2 of the ordinance. Section 2 is about adding some items to Schedule M entitled No Parking Zone. The proposed amendment makes two technical corrections by removing two blocks from Section 2 that were included by mistake, as follows. So the first correction is removing both sides of 18th Street from Grant Street to Lincoln Street. This is because parking was added on this street, and the code already defines the area where there is no parking on this street. So the block needs to be removed from Title 15. The second correction is removing the east side of Washington Street from 19th Street to 20th Street. And this is because this block should be moved from Section 2 to Section 3 of the ordinance. The second amendment, Amendment 2, which is submitted by a staff and is in search of a sponsor, is related to the Section 3 of the ordinance. Section 3 is about removing some items from Schedule M.
Point of order. Madam Chair, maybe we should vote on each amendment separately?
Okay, how do you normally do the Title 12, 15 amendments? I mean, that seems like a lot of, there's just so many here.
Well, there's only five, but are there more than five?
Four amendments, and I believe Councilmember Rosenberg has one amendment.
So six. It's just that, I mean, at some point, we're going to need to have a procedural vote on each amendment. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not sort of, I mean, we're not, we don't have a consent agenda, that's mildly concerned.
I, I can add some context. Planning staff prepared four amendments that were released in the packet and were seeking council sponsors for all four of those. I believe Council Committee Member Piedmont Smith offered to sponsor one of those amendments, but I believe the other three may still be in need of a council or a committee sponsorship. There were two additional amendments that I don't think have been. One may have been distributed in the packet addendum. I believe Committee Member Rosenberg's amendment. And Amendment 5, which I believe Committee Member Volan may introduce tonight, has not yet been released. So that's where we stand, and it's up to the committee if they'd like to get an overview of what the universe of amendments are before deciding whether to sponsor any of these. But that's, that's why the staff amendments are, some, three of them at least, don't have a sponsor yet.
Okay, so if we're treating this as kind of a staff presentation, that, I guess, that's acceptable. I'll just say now I'll be willing to sponsor the ones that aren't already. Thank you for, sorry for the interruption.
And, okay, I'm just going to ask if we need to have sponsors. Do we need to do that today, or can it wait? But it's.
In order to have a vote on it, somebody has to move it, yeah, somebody has to, to, to move the amendment. So I'm happy to do those, but if you'll continue.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I wanted to request actually that we discuss and vote on the amendments one by one, because I'll have forgotten what the first one is by the time we come back to it, so.
That's why.
It can be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and go back and let's discuss?
Madam Chair, I will move Amendment 1 to ordinance 2012.
Okay. I don't know that there's much to discuss.
I mean, we're right, is there any discussion? We can be casual here, I think.
It's just correcting an error, seems like.
Although these are minor technical changes, I would suggest going to the public for, for each amendment.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm just like, okay, this is a random, this feels more random to me tonight. Okay, if no council discussion, I'm sorry, and then Councilmember Smith, you heard, and I need to make my screen a little bigger so I can see you. There you are, okay, so I can, any discussion from councilmembers on that? No, okay. Okay, let's go to the public on our first amendment.
So for, for any member of the public that, that wants to make a comment on Amendment 1, you can do so by either raising your hand, using the raise hand function, or sending a message through chat to let us know that you'd like to comment.
Okay, no one on the no parking zone updates, okay? Okay, so I think we can go ahead and do a due pass vote on this. Do I record this, or Stephen, do you record this?
Typically, the chair just calls on, on committee members, and they can indicate your no.
Right, I guess I just mean I should be writing this down for each amendment, right?
The clerk is, is keeping a record of the votes.
Also here, if you need me to do it.
Oh, okay, I just, I just want to make sure, I mean, I am assuming we're sort of going to be yes for most of these, but, okay, so I'll just go ahead and call around. Councilmember, oh, is this okay? Did I say this is a due pass for Amendment 1? Okay, okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well, okay. So now we can, that one passes for 0. Let's move on to Amendment 2.
Madam Chair, I move amendment, I move amendment 2.
Second.
Okay, sorry. Any discussion, councilmember discussion? Let's go to Amendment 2, do we want to hear from staff on this?
Yeah, just briefly.
Councilmember Volan?
Well, I think he already presented on it, and this is actually, yeah, he said that the text needed to be moved from one section to another. The previous ordinance struck out the one section, this one just puts it in the other. So if I'm wrong about that, he can correct me. It really should have been one amendment.
Yeah, the only addition is about Grant Street, the second correction, which is about Grant Street from 18th Street to 19th Street, to change the east side to both sides of the streets.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other committee discussion?
No.
Amendment 2, okay, let's go to the public, see if the public would like to weigh in on Amendment 2. Just updating to no parking zone, anybody, I can't see because we're doing a shared screen. Stephen, I trust you are checking.
I see no requests for comments on this. If folks have requests to make a comment on Amendment 2, you can raise your hand or type into the chat. And I'm not seeing anyone jump up and down.
Okay, I think we're ready to consider a due pass recommendation for Amendment 2. I will call, okay, Councilmember Smith?
I'm eating my sandwich, yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rosenberg, also yes. Okay, on, where did we go? What's next, everybody?
I move Amendment number 3.
Wait, oh, yes, I, I actually offered to sponsor this one, but you can still move it.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
This is about the loading zones. Mr. Farshid, do you want to?
The Amendment 3, which is submitted by a staff and is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, is related to Section 5 of the ordinance. Section 5 is about adding some items to Schedule O entitled, entitled loading zones. Loading zones shall be in effect 24 hours a day, seven days a week, except where otherwise noted in Schedule O, and all vehicles shall be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes use. The amendment makes three corrections to clarify the hours of three loading zones as follows. The first correction is adding the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, to the loading zone on 700 block of East 13th Street. The second correction is adding the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, to the loading zone on 800 block of East 13th Street. And the third correction is adding the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, to the loading zone on 1600 block of North Kinser Park.
Okay, any committee member, oh, we're still going, you're just scrolling down a little, okay.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, wonderful. Any councilmember questions on Amendment 3, loading zone? Kind of tackled this last time, I think, pretty well. Okay, anyone gearing up from the public for public comment on this one? Three, two, one, seems like we're okay, I don't think we had any last time. Okay, I think we can consider a due pass recommendation for Amendment 3 of ordinance 2012. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberg, yes, okay, this one passes as well, 4 0. Onward to Amendment 4, who's our sponsor?
I'll move it if nobody else will.
Okay, I think that he did, I'll second that, okay?
Can we have a presentation, please?
Sure. Let me present it quickly. Amendment 4 is submitted by a staff, is related to Section 6 of the ordinance. Section 6 is about adding motorcycle parking restrictions to Title 15. The amendment corrects a reference to a definition within the recently adopted Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, as follows. The correction is about the term class 2 bicycle parking facility shall mean a short-term parking facility intended for relatively short duration as defined by BMC 20 dot 11 dot 020. And the correction is changing the BMC 20 dot 11 dot 20 to BMC 20 dot 07 dot 010.
Okay, let's go to councilmember discussion on this, Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I would like a little bit more clarification on why we need this amendment, not because I oppose it or support it, I just don't quite understand what is the objective here that staff is trying to achieve.
You know, because the recent UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, changed some sections of Title 15, and I think this is kind of a recent change, happens one month ago, maybe, or two months ago in the code, we realized that the reference to the Bloomington Municipal Code needs to be corrected based on the UDO, the definition of class 2 bicycles, just the title of the code need to be revised, will be a correct section in the code. So it's only the reference to the new UDO.
Okay, so this doesn't actually materially change meaning, it just corrects an error?
Yes, the definition of the class 2 bicycle is still the same in the code, only the location that this section is referring to.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
So if you all can guide me on this as the chair. I, I have an amendment to this amendment, right? So I have an updated version, is that something we would discuss now?
So, and I, I think you're not necessarily amending this amendment. I think what you'd like to do is amend the same section of code that that amendment changes. So the two amendments will need to be, you know, obviously, if Amendment 4 is, is passed, it will need to be incorporated into this section as well. So I would wait to, to discuss your changes after we've talked about Amendment 4.
Okay, they are so related, I mean, I think in my discussion, okay, well, I think I'll just talk about it a little bit in this discussion of why I wouldn't recommend this one, right, and for my vote.
Well, I, I assume that regardless of whether your amendment is adopted, you would want to correct this code citation.
Okay, okay, right. All right, it's just that one little thing, okay. Yes, my amendment has that updated code citation as well, but, oh, I see, because mine didn't, because it was a little late in the day, right, right, okay. That email came in during this meeting, great, okay, so, okay, so this amendment is really just switching the code citation, pretty straightforward. Let's go to the public and see if anyone would like to comment on this updated code citation, Amendment 4. I didn't ask, I'm sorry, you guys, I didn't ask if we have any other councilmember comment. No, okay, okay.
I did get a message that Aobon Binder would like to make a public comment, although he and other members of the public should know that there is, I believe, an upcoming amendment that Councilmember Rosenberg may be discussing that, which is in the section with a little more detail. So, Mr. Binder, you should be muted and ready to comment.
Thanks, maybe I should just say my public comment for after Councilmember Rosenberg presents her changes, because it, it seems to me that the matter at hand right now is actually just pertaining to this one little bit in red. Is that, is that right? Okay, I'll just, if it's okay, maybe you can circle back to me in a minute.
Definitely, let's hang in there, thank you. Okay, anyone else for Amendment 4? Okay, I think we can recommend a due pass for this code update, Amendment 4. Let's go out of order this time, Councilmember Volan? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, so Amendment 4, the 4 0, due pass recommendation to go to council next week. Okay, let's move to Amendment 5.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move Amendment 5. Madam Chair, I'd like to move Amendment 5. I can use a second.
Yeah, I said I seconded, so we're good.
Do I need a second? I'm not even sure, but, okay.
What is Amendment 5? Do we have an Amendment 5?
Mr. Lucas, could you circulate it?
Councilmember Volan, I'm, I'm working on posting that online for the moment. It may be easiest to share your screen, I don't know if you've got it pulled up, or I can share my screen and display.
If you would share your screen, I don't have it on, on this device where I'm speaking. But it's going to take some explaining, and I'm not sure it's obvious from just looking at the amendment. So let me explain the situation. So the immediate problem that I'm trying to solve is that the passage of ordinance 1811 created the parking zone in Garden Hill, it's known as Zone 6. And Zone 6 has been more successful than, than even I anticipated. There are approximately 240 spaces in Zone 6 on, on the street. That's the rough count that I have from planning and transportation. 97 permits were sold in that zone in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. And so many streets went empty as a result, because this was also the first zone to be enforced at night and on weekends. So it's quite a bit more restrictive than previous neighborhood zones have been. It has been, is met with the strong approval of the Neighborhood Association, they're very happy with it, but questions have arisen among residents who are not eligible for permits as to why, if the street is empty, they cannot even have visitors come and park there without threat of, of a ticket. And so in a way, you could say that this ordinance has overregulated the zone. So one thing I'm trying to do is to reach a closer to equilibrium with this by opening the zone up to people who would not normally be eligible for a permit in the zone. In other words, specifically, people who live in multifamily housing. But recognizing that there's a limit to how much parking there ought to be available to, in other words, without it becoming overcrowded like it was before ordinance 1811. This amendment, A, permits people who live in multifamily dwelling buildings to purchase a permit, but it also caps the number of permits at 250. But then it does something else new as an experiment. For this fiscal year only, it would allow the first 150 permits to be sold at $46. This is a relative bargain in this area where the market for private parking off-street is anywhere between $25 and $70 a month in garages and lots. But because we don't want to incentivize people to simply try to find the cheaper parking rather than the parking that goes with their apartment building, it proposes an experiment that the first 150 permits will be sold at $46, which is the normal rate for a neighborhood zone. The second 50, the, the penultimate 50 permits will be sold at the rate for, of the all-zone permit, $106 for the year. And the final 50 permits will be sold at double the all-zone rate, or $212 for the year. And this provision, this entire amendment expires February of 2021. So the, the goal here is to experiment with market pricing in Zone 6 so as to prevent multifamily dwellers from buying up all the permits too quickly, but also sort of preserving for the intended users the original price and intent. I mean, again, only 97 permits were sold last year to people in single-family dwellings, so this should accommodate all of them. 75% of permits are purchased in the first month of the school, of the school year. The remaining 25, according to parking services, are purchased in January. And this is a rough number, of course, of people buy during the year, but because of this, I thought it was acceptable to, to, to try this. We're also in no ordinary year, it's a pandemic year, so we don't really know how many people are coming back. So we don't really know how many people are coming back to school this year. But with IU's new schedule, where all classes will be online after Thanksgiving and before February, this gives it an extra month in twenty twenty-one to play out. But I think we're going to see the immediate results of it within the first month. One more thing this amendment does is it incentivizes support for the market pricing scheme by saying that every dollar after the first forty-six dollars per permit goes into a new fund specifically to make Public Works improvements in the zone where the permits were sold. So it's called the Parking Benefit District. The notion is one that Donald Shoup promotes in his book, The High Cost of Free Parking, and it simply says that the benefit should accrue to the place where the parking is being purchased. So basically, the first forty-six dollars of every permit sold continue to go to fund the cost of neighborhood zone enforcement and maintenance. But if the one hundred and fifty first permit gets sold, the first, the first forty-six goes to the regular use. The additional sixty dollars goes into a fund for Zone Six, for Garden Hill, to repair sidewalks, to bury power cables, to repair curbs, to put up lighting. However they see fit, of course, they'll be consulting with Public Works, Planning and Transportation, and the decision would be made by the council. But this basically creates, it's kind of like a parking increment finance district. The additional revenues accrue to the benefit of the area, and they stay in the zone. So if all two hundred and fifty permits are sold, it'll, I actually didn't do the math, sixty-three thousand plus, let's see, six thousand, it'll be about twelve thousand dollars that could go to repair a curb or build a sidewalk in the first year. But I, we don't really know how many permits are going to be sold. We don't really know whether there's going to be a demand for it or not. But one of the concerns that I heard expressed by many people who I consulted on the original idea was that it should be priced equitably. Originally, I had priced it where people who are not eligible for a neighborhood zone permit could buy one, but only at the higher price. And so to address those issues, I created this scheme instead. And my goal is to get it discussed. I don't necessarily expect that it should or would carry favor. When the prior proposal was discussed in Parking Commission, the one that I proposed that had an elevated price for people living in multifamily dwellings, it was met with a three-three vote. So it did not pass, that did not find favor at Parking Commission. That's why I've changed the pricing scheme to the one you see, you've heard tonight. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on the idea. But before I do that, I'd like to get feedback from any member of staff who would like to respond to the proposal.
I will note that a link to the amendment as a PDF was sent out in chat. And through no fault of Councilmember Volan's, we, council staff was working on this late today and didn't include this in the packet addendum. So apologies for the folks that are just now getting to review this.
Does staff have any, thank you, Mr. Lucas, does staff have any thoughts about this at all?
Hi, this is Beth Rosenbarger, Planning Services Manager for Planning and Transportation Department. I have all sorts of thoughts, mainly. I know that Councilmember Volan has been talking about this kind of in concept for, for some time. We talked at the Parking Commission about this or something similar. It's sort of a challenge because we didn't see the amendment until now. So additionally, Michelle Wall, the Parking Services Director, can't be here tonight because she's out of the office. So I think it's probably fair to say, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not opposed to the concept, but concerned about administering this right now and concerned about doing escalating prices, I would say. When, I think I understand sort of the market argument or to see how demand changes. But I would also be open to the same price for multiple dwellings and just see how many sell, just opening it up since it hasn't been opened up in the past. And I'm a little apprehensive to limit the funds to only that district, even though I think I understand the rationale and would be happy to learn more about it and talk more about it. But I think it gives me pause at this time, so it's something I'd want to consider more.
I'd love to be able to address Ms. Rosenbarger's concerns. First of all, and I wish I had written them down, because there's several substantial concerns. But I'll start with the technical concern. One of the biggest reasons why Ms. Wall was concerned about this ordinance when I initially proposed it was the, what she thought of as the technical challenge of implementing it in our behind-the-scenes system that's managed by a company called T2. And I think originally, her problem was that in my first proposal, it also allowed anyone, not merely a resident of Zone Six, to buy a permit. Outsiders could buy a permit. And the reasoning at the time was that it allows people who are going to football games to buy a permit in the zone, because that's one reason, that was one source of demand for parking in that zone was people going to games in the stadium. Well, Ms. Wall had also proposed a change to code that would allow for temporary visitor permits. And I think that's actually in this, in the ordinance that we're discussing. And those temporary visitor permits, they're actually a first, and they're available across all zones. But they address the problem that I had originally been concerned about, that I wanted to charge a premium to outsiders who wanted to park in Zone Six to avoid paying twenty bucks at the stadium for a football game. But those temporary permits do the job, and so that was not necessary. And it was also technically complicated. So I changed it, and that was her biggest concern with implementing it, because, you know, we're close to the beginning of the next year. Other concerns Ms. Rosenbarger have include, trying to remember them all. So the pricing of the permit is equal for everybody. I want to make that clear. It's the first one hundred and fifty permits that are normally priced, but the final hundred permits are at a higher price. So it's not exclusive to single-family dwelling residents. Anybody who has an address in Zone Six can now buy a permit. But if they wait until the one hundred and fiftieth permit is sold this year only, as an experiment, they're going to pay a higher price for one of the next fifty. And if they wait until the two-hundredth permit is sold, no matter what kind of building they live in, they'll pay the higher price, which will be two hundred and twelve dollars. So again, we saw last year that only ninety-seven permits were sold. So the demand among single-family dwellers is more than met by this proposal. But furthermore, this is a sunsetted proposal. It's meant to experiment and to see what is the demand in Zone Six for parking. If we don't do this, if we only price it at forty-six dollars, they'll all get snapped up. And there will be, we'll have learned nothing from it. So here, we've more than accommodated the single-family demand, and this is a matter of first come, first served. But it is, it is, certainly treats people equitably depending on what kind of building they live in. I've forgotten what other concerns Ms. Rosenbarger had, but I'm happy to address them.
Thanks, Councilmember Volan. I think, I'm sorry, because the ordinance does the reference to the fees, can you say them again for me really quickly about how much is it for the first one hundred and fifty people? And then my next one is, I can wait if you want, though, but.
Yeah, yeah, let me just address that so I remember it.
Okay.
So again, the, the regular price applies to the first one hundred and fifty permits. One thing that's important about the amendment is that it caps the number of permits where they weren't capped before. But the first one hundred and fifty, same price as before, like every other zone. The penultimate fifty are set at the same rate as the all-zone permit, which is what a permit that realtors or contractors buy that is also the same cost that fraternities in Zone Five purchase or residents of Collins, they pay the all-zone rate. And the last fifty would be at double that rate, so two hundred and twelve dollars in the twenty twenty, twenty-one academic year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Next question.
Yes, please.
It's more a statement, but it was me expressing concerns about, I mean, you could frame it as the number of variables happening at once. So it is increased, it is allowing more people to have access to the permit. It is also doing an escalating price for permits, you know, after a certain number sold. And then the, I can see it's not a variable, but defining it as a parking benefit district when my concern, I can state that, my concerns on that are twofold. Number one, it will take a lot of time to generate money that could do a project. So I'll try to figure out what, you know, if you wanted to build a sidewalk. You know, we say sidewalk, they're a million dollars a mile. It's harder if it's smaller. Sometimes it's more expensive. So that's going to take, I don't know, I guess they're actually forty-five dollars sometime. And then limiting it to the district when I understand that there's more, it would show that there's demand for the parking, but it's not necessarily the place in the city that has the highest need for an improved sidewalk, say. There might be other neighborhoods that also need an improved sidewalk, but don't have the same parking demand to do that. They're related. Thank you.
Okay, so the first thing was, I've already forgotten it, because I was listening to the second thing.
It's going to take a lot of time.
Right, a lot of money.
To do anything infrastructure.
Yes, so the money at first may be limited to repairs. You know, the neighborhoods like Garden Hill have been accustomed to not benefiting from the sidewalk program, because it only builds new sidewalks, and most of the core neighborhoods have had sidewalks built a long time ago. But repairing of sidewalks is another matter, and they wait in line a long time for repairs. So, but the important thing to think about this is that it's a demonstration project. I want to show that there is a demand for parking that isn't appropriately addressed by our current pricing, that it's almost a subsidy of parking, and that that street value is, is much higher than we're pricing it at. But, you know, I think that the neighbors would object very strongly to dollars generated in, you know, in this program going to other neighborhoods. I think the only reason that they would accept it is because they know that they would benefit from it. This is the same principle as a tax increment financing district. You know, instead of the money going to the state to be distributed generally, the money stays in the district where the taxes are generated in order to incentivize improvement. This is exactly the same principle. So I think it's actually very equitable and that it's key to getting acceptance from the neighborhood for it. I believe that in every zone, the residents of the zone should benefit from the zone. Because right now, it's serving people who live outside the zone without compensation to the people in the zone. You know, like the whole reason that the zone is there is to, was to prevent commuting back in the nineties, people trying to commute to IU from outside of it. So, you know, I think that it's very equitable. It's good economic policy. I can, I can understand why there's an argument that we should spread the wealth, but I, I don't agree with it. I think that this is an important component of the notion and wouldn't be viable otherwise. I think I've answered all of Ms. Rosenbarger's questions, but I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sure I have more, but I'm okay. It looks like Councilmember, I know, I'm not leaving this. Councilmember Smith wanted to say something, too.
Ms. Rosenbarger, Councilmember Rosenbarger, that's all I have for the presentation. Sorry to take so long.
No, it's okay. I just didn't want to interrupt and want to make sure you got everything answered. Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I, I just kept waving my hand because I wasn't sure if.
I can see you.
If you saw me. You know, I have to say that I'm totally in support of Councilmember Volan's idea here. It seems just like a great idea. It seems like a great way to have kind of a pilot project to look at the market system and how that works and that the benefits are going to the people who bear the burden of all the extra people coming to park there. I would think this would make the folks in the neighborhood thrilled that they're going to receive some benefit by having people, interlopers, come and park in their, in their neighborhood to go to the IU games or whatever. It just seems like, it's a great, it seems like a great idea, so I heartily support this.
Is that a question?
No, it was just a comment. I really supported it.
We're in Q and A.
It's all right. Yeah, we're Q and A, but it's, you know, it's nine seventeen. We're casual here. It's nine seventeen.
I want to emphasize something about what Mr. Smith said. This does not serve people going to a game. It does not. There's a different, the staff has already proposed the establishment of a temporary visitor permit. And that, like, you can buy a permit to park in Garden Hill on a game day if you want to. Okay? So I just want to make sure that that's clear. But also, while I appreciate the support, I just wanted to make sure that it was known that Garden Hill expressed to me their strong interest in the program because of these terms. But I also recognize that unlike the zone itself, this is an unusual, particularly unusual proposal. And so I put a sunset on it to see what kind of numbers we get. But if, if it's successful, I'm going to propose it across the board to every neighborhood zone. But the amendment only offers it in Zone Six, and it's for Zone Six permits only.
Thank you for that clarification. It's still a great program.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah. First, I want to just clarify that the new temporary visiting parking permits can only be purchased by people who live in Zone Six. For even, I mean, they can live in multifamily residencies, residences in Zone Six, but they would have to live there to purchase a temporary visitor permit. So anyway, I just want to clarify that. But as to this amendment, why charge more after selling the first one hundred and fifty permits? I just don't understand the logic.
That's a very good question and a complicated answer. The, when I was proposing a higher price for multifamily dwellers, everyone I talked to said, that's not equitable. Why are you charging more for people who live in apartments than people who live in houses? Well, actually, that may be true, but right now, there is no parking on the street for any reason from Thursday night to Sunday morning, unless you live in a single-family dwelling. So, right now, people who live in multifamily dwellings are required, if they want to have a car, to park in private off-street parking. And the market rate, the lowest rate for garage parking, for example, in that area is $25 a month. And apartment complexes can charge what they want. So, there's parking that's being completely unused on the street. That is, that if, if we continue for another year, will continue to be unavailable to anybody. And I'm not somebody who's such a, an anti-car fanatic, that I don't think we should use the resource that we have. So, if there is demand for parking, and we have supply that we're artificially keeping off the market, it doesn't make sense. So, but, at the other hand, $46 a year for a neighborhood permit is a significant subsidy to single-family homes. And when the program was created in 1992, I'm not sure that this particular facet of it was thought about that much. But since then, we have come a long way in the way we think about housing equity. And, you know, it just, this, this, we only raised the, the fee to what it cost us to manage our neighborhood zone program with ordinance 1811. For 25 years, we charged $25 a year per permit, across the board, throughout the city, because it was completely arbitrary. There was no thought behind it. Now, at least, the $46, which is escalating every, 3% every year, at least it covers our costs. We established that about three, four years ago. But it's still a subsidy. It's still a subsidy to single-family homes. There is no good reason why people living in duplexes, quadplexes, multifamily apartment buildings don't have access to the street. But if we gave everybody in the neighborhood access to the street, we would be, the, the permits would sell out in no time. That's why there's a cap. And so this provides us a unique opportunity to figure out what the market is in this area. The, the other problem with these annual permits is that you can only change the price once a year. Frankly, we should be going to a semester program for neighborhood permits. But until such times we do that, this is a quick and dirty way, not only to solve the empty street problem in Zone 6, but to do a brief market experiment, and to see what is the price people are willing to pay for these permits. If we don't sell them all, then we know that maybe we're charging too much, and there's not as much demand for it. But if in a year like this, where not even every IU student's coming back, that we still sell out of these permits, that's a sign that, to everybody across the city, that the neighborhood parking permit program is underpriced and needs to be raised to meet demand. So, that's my long answer to it. I hope that suffices.
I still don't understand. I mean, if you think there's such a high demand, then why not just charge $80 for all of the 250 permits?
Because we just don't know.
It just, it doesn't, I mean, there are some equity issues with your previous proposal, but with this one as well, in a way, it's, it just seems arbitrary that, okay, what if I, you know, got a job at IU and I move here in November? And there's only, you know, and I have, and I want to park my car in the street, and now I have to pay $212? Because I just happened to move to Bloomington two months, three months too late?
If the average, if, if the market price for parking in Zone 6 right now is $300 a year, you know, then, I mean, the program, the part that's inequitable is not this proposal. The part that's inequitable is the neighborhood parking zone itself, which is insensitive to, to the demand. It's providing supply at a subsidized rate. But to change that program now is gonna take a lot more than this minor change, which is an administrative change that could be implemented by August 15th. It's just offering additional permits to people who weren't eligible before. The, the concern that staff had initially was implementing it, and we worked out that concern at Parking Commission. But make no mistake, the inequity of the program is the program itself and not this proposal. This proposal at least gives people a new choice, a less expensive choice, than any market available parking right now. But again, it also, it charges everybody the same price. It just, after a certain number of permits have been sold, we know that there is demand, and the price goes up. It's called escalating parking. We have other examples of it in code. We have escalating fines for noise violations. If we know that, I mean, the, the big problem is, what if we charge $46 and we sold 200, 250 permits? We don't necessarily know who they went to. This at least puts some friction, and we're gonna address the demand that we know the single-family homeowners have. They're not gonna be affected. There's at least 97 permits available to them. But for everybody else, you know, including single-family homeowners who didn't buy a permit last year, at least it's, it treats everybody equally. It's a matter of first come, first served.
Other question? I have some, but, the other council members. Okay. I think, I mean, I think this is gonna be hard to figure out for me tonight, but I, I, you know, I am still very hesitant on a different price scheme as it, as it goes. I mean, I, I know we've talked a little about just having one price the, the whole time, and I like that. Have you talked to people in, in housing, other than single-family, to see what they think about this?
No. Okay, so far. I will say this. I have received several emails from residents of Zone 6 who live in multifamily dwellings, who ask, "I can't even get a visitor, visitor to park here. There's no way to buy a visitor permit, and this ordinance is going to fix that." But they also have asked me the question, "The street is empty. Why can't I park here?" Now, I have an answer to them, but the problem is, if we offer more permits to, this would be the first time that we offer permits to people who don't live in a single-family dwelling. We don't know what the demand is, but I expect it's gonna be much higher than the demand for single-family in this neighborhood. If we put the price of 46 to everybody, I will withdraw the amendment. It's not worth doing. We need to find a way to control the demand for parking. You do that through price.
So, right, and as Councilmember P. Monc Smith asked, would you, is, is it possible to do something like $80, right? I mean, I don't, that's so arbitrary, but the same price for every single permit in this neighborhood?
No, I would not. There, there's no, there's no basis for it. It's an arbitrary figure. We don't know whether it's too high or too low. That's why I'm proposing this three-tier scheme.
But aren't your tiers arbitrary?
They are, but they're tiered, and the first 150 are the same price, price as before. I mean, at, at least they, they escalate, so we can see if, if the demand slows down. If it does, then it's a clear sign that we shouldn't renew it. But if those permits sell out, even at the higher price, we've been grossly underestimating how much we should be charging for permits. We should be thinking about market-based pricing across all parking, all neighborhood zones.
And so, okay, so you are worried that too many permits will be sold, and so you want to increase the prices, we sell more. Do we know the nitty-gritty? Do we know how many spots are available? And how many permits are sold now? How many non-single-family home, homes there are? How many of those folks have their own parking for one car? Right, do, like, do we know these?
We know some of these things. We know that there are roughly 240 spaces in Zone 6 on the street, according to Planning and Transportation. We know from Parking Services that 97 permits were sold last year, in the first year of the zone, and those permits, of course, could only be bought by residents of single-family dwellings. So, we know what the demand is. And the first reason why this amendment came up, in my mind, was to say, there's, this is one of the lowest ratios of single-family dwellings to all dwellings in a neighborhood zone. So, we've addressed the demand for single-family dwellings. And my response to the concern about first come, first served is, we don't know how many houses, we don't, haven't done a count of how many of them have off-street parking, but that would be my answer to those houses that, that, you know, maybe don't get a permit this year at the price they were used to. If they have off-street parking, they should use it, if they have a driveway, for example. But, you know, we don't have that figure, but I still think that this proposal more than adequately addresses concern over demanded caps, the total number of permits. It's only, you know, a fraction of permits above the total number of spots in the zone, so it basically doesn't oversell the zone. But it does experiment with price to see, I mean, there, there is no better opportunity to do a market experiment on a permit that's renewed on an annual basis, except this. So, we're providing as many permits as we provided last year, and then some. But in case there's a, a run on permits, we can put the brakes on it through price. That's how you, you manage demand.
The 97 permits, I'm sorry, this is my last question. I'm just, I'm right on this topic, I think, and then, Councilmember P. Monc Smith. The 97 permits sold, is that visitor and residential?
No, visitor permits are now temporary, and they can be, you can buy as many as you want.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought visitor permits are still annual. And we're also adding in a temporary permit option, but I thought you could, residents and single-family homes in the zone can still get an annual visitor permit?
I think that the ordinance removes annual visitor permits in favor of the temporary, but I could be wrong about this. I haven't looked at it lately. But I think that it revokes annual permits in favor of visitor permits, which are $11 per day, $55 per week, $110 per fortnight.
Okay. I'm gonna let Councilmember P. Monc Smith ask her question, and then I know Staff Member Ms. Rosenberg would like to comment as well, so we'll do that order.
So, I wanted to know about the, how you got the number of 250 as the limit of what multifamily-dwelling residents could purchase in Zone 6?
I didn't.
You already said, you said that there are 240, about 240 spaces. 97 permits were sold last year, so those are to single-family home residents. So, that leaves, you know, about 100, 140, 143. So, but you're saying you want to sell a maximum 250? So, you are overselling the parking?
Well, this is, goes to your concerns about equity. It does not privilege single-family residents. It doesn't reserve 100 permits, the 97 permits that they bought last year. So, it simply says, I mean, right now, there's no cap on permits. You can sell as many as you want to buy, but the only people who want to buy them in this zone bought 97 of them. And they're, they're the ones who are eligible as single-family homeowners. There are a whole lot more multifamily dwellers in Zone 6. But I'm not saying that there should be a parking space for every multifamily dweller. I'm simply saying, the other 140 or so, 150, let's make them available. Let's sell them.
So, 250 is the total cap, including the people who live in single-family homes?
Correct, and it's first come, first served.
So, okay. Well, then I have even more problems with it. So, if somebody, you know, is on vacation until August 31st, comes back, they, they, they live here, they live there, they've lived there for 20 years, let's say, in a single-family house. Now, suddenly, they have to pay $106, just because they were on vacation for, for two weeks or something?
I, I mean, if we don't, if we, if we treat single-family homeowners differently, then it will be no less inequitable than your concern over price. I mean.
Well, no, my concern over price is about first come, first served. I, what if, I mean, I, it seems just as arbitrary to me to say, first come, first served, you know, up to a different price when we get down to 100 permits left, than when we get down to 50 permits left, as saying, "Let's just make them all $80." So, if we're gonna do this as a pilot anyway, I would prefer to give one price, no matter when you buy the thing, 250 permit limit, and just say, $80, $85, $75, whatever.
If we, if we price it anything below what the actual market is, the, the market will be overrun by more opportunistic people, and, you know, people who are renting, who didn't have, I mean, they're gonna, instead of paying 200, 250 for parking, which they're maybe avoiding in TerraTrace or Brownstone Terrace, or however much more it is in that, I mean, that's the, the low end of the market in Zone 6. They're going to opt for this $46 permit. Even at $80, I think it's underpriced. There's a, there's a much bigger demand for parking in Zone 6, non-commuter demand, than there is in other zones. I, just because of the sheer number of multifamily dwellings there. But, I mean, it's not worth it to make it available to everybody at $46. It will create, it will recreate the conditions that caused the neighborhood to request the zone in the first place.
I wasn't proposing to make it $46 for everybody. I was proposing to make it $80 for everybody.
But, I mean, on what basis do you make that price, and how do we learn anything from it?
On what basis do you say that the first 100 people get it for 46, and the second 100 people have to pay more? I mean.
I, I've, I've based it on two. On number one, the current price, the market rate for off-street parking, and the escalator. It's the escalator that matters, okay? I'm admitting fully that the pricing is arbitrary, because we have no other data, except those two data points. And, you know, here, we're offering parking that wasn't available before. It was simply not, we, the, the demand was 97 permits last year. That was the demand. But the streets were empty. So, you know, this is a way of, of, in a controlled experiment, seeing what the demand is in a parking zone. That has an unusual situation in the first place. It's like no other zone, in that it's enforced at night and on weekends. So, I mean, I, I, this has been, it's very complicated. I don't blame anyone for thinking that there's a certain apparent inequity to it. But it's sort of a, a quick and dirty experiment that we can implement right now for this school year that will solve the immediate problem of empty streets going, looking for parking, without overselling it, and with, by putting an appropriate amount of friction on the final 100 permits that are sold. You know, if, if you're concerned about single-family homeowners not being able to buy at $46, then you have to ask yourself the question, "Why are you prioritizing them over people living in multifamily dwellings?"
I want us just to be aware of the time. We have a few other things to get to tonight, and it is quite late.
And just a correction, Mr. Farschi has pointed out that the temporary permit, or the, the annual permit, visitor permit still will be in this, they're not being canceled after all.
Right, and that is only for single-family homeowners. I want to see if Ms. Rosenberg wants to weigh in on this. She asked if she could comment, so.
Hi, yes. Well, I guess I'm not sure. It's, my first thing would just be, I understand, we just didn't get the amendment until right now, and especially with Ms. Wall out today. I think we would, I would say we're reluctant. We, I couldn't support it right now, as is, and I definitely could not support it without her having the opportunity to review and public works as well. Some small comments I would make, they're actually this regular size, is some points that were made was, you know, about the money going back into the district, but the, the irony that the neighborhood parking permit program is subsidized by the entire city. So, in no way does the cost- So in no way does the cost of the permit cover the program right now, but then the benefit of that amount was going to the district. Again, I think I'm not all opposed to a neighborhood or to a benefit district, but I, the whole city, all taxpayers and are still paying into neighborhood permit programs, whether or not you live in one. And the residents who do live there already do get a benefit and that their streets are enforced. So they have monitored parking on the street, which is a benefit. And then the other way it could be changed, of course, is just the reason this inequity exists is that code says it's only detached single-family homes. That's a different change that could happen. And finally, well, maybe a couple other things. In the Transportation Demand Management Plan, it does recommend raising the prices for residential parking permits. It recommends, and this is based, this is based on analysis, to $40 a month. It said raising it by $40 a month, so maybe that's in addition to the 45, but that's $480 a year. So that is a much, much different price, but I would say it's based on something. And I think this also comes down to a bit of a, I want to call it a philosophical debate of whose street is it. I think it matters for the people who live on a street and in a neighborhood to get to weigh in, but it's also maintained by the city as a whole and, and also public space. So trying to, to balance that. I do think the neighborhood zones have been useful as basically a transportation demand management strategy, like council member Volan said, so that people couldn't get free parking quotes next to campus. So it is a tool for that. But anyway, that was a lot of points. Basically, right now, staff can't support without some more time. Thanks.
If I can respond briefly. I agree that Michelle Wall and Public Works should weigh in on this. I, you know, fully acknowledge that I introduced this at the last minute because I wasn't even sure I was going to introduce it. I, you know, I've had to think about it a lot, and based on the conversation tonight, I decided to introduce it. So I'm totally fine with abstentions tonight. For me, it was more important that we discussed the ideas, and this was an opportunity to discuss it in committee, number one. Number two, the, the, this proposal already contemplates the cost of maintaining the program. When the Parking Commission did their first report, they found that the actual cost of maintaining the neighborhood zone program was closer to $40 per permit, and they were charging 25. The, the ordinance, 1811, set the price to, to fully recover the cost of providing the neighborhood zone enforcement program. So this proposal does nothing to, in other words, no matter what the price of the permit sold, the first $46 continues to go to funding the cost of the program. Dollars above the cost of the program, the cost of the single-family permit, or what is now the, the current permit price, would go to the benefit of the neighborhood. So it's only surplus dollars, and it should make anyone who lives in that neighborhood feel better about the money they're putting into parking, knowing that the surplus, not all of it, but the surplus stays in the neighborhood. Finally, the idea that our plans call for raising street parking to $40 a month is the best illustration yet of how relatively more equitable this proposal is. It's starting, it's an experiment to raise prices to see if, in fact, the market will bear it, and this is the perfect test case. And again, it has a sunset provision of February 21. I am open between now and next week to adjusting any aspect of this, but the escalation is the feature, not a bug. But again, at $480 a year, I'm proposing less than half that as an experiment for one year only, and we're going to find out within the first month how successful it is. So with that, I'm happy to, to hear public comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, I think your audio cut out.
Sorry, I was on, I muted because I was typing. Let's move to public comment, sorry. So if anyone out there would like to make a comment on this, okay?
I.
I see you'll have five minutes, it looks like, right?
Mr. Greg Alexander should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Thanks. Hi, this is Greg Alexander. I, this is a progressive sign, you know, I'm, I'm excited. We really do need to open parking up to more of the market and also approach market price, you know? And I have basically the same concerns staff did, you know, that the, the benefit that the neighborhood gets is that their parking is managed, and as long as that parking is managed responsibly, I think it's, it's, they get that benefit. And so it's not ridiculously oversold. I think the people who actually, you know, live there year in, year out, they're gonna figure out what they need to do to get the permit to be first in line, whereas people that rent, they're just gonna come in in a wave probably at the end of July, you know? So I think probably the escalating price is probably overthinking it, but specifically the parking benefit district, like, that was invented to overcome organized opposition from like a downtown emergency association. It wasn't meant to overcome a neighborhood association. I mean, I, I realize that it could, but the amount of money involved is just, it's a pittance. This neighborhood, we're talking about Garden Hill, right? It, it desperately needs sidewalks on 17th Street, which, there are some sidewalks there, but it desperately needs complete sidewalks on 17th Street. And it desperately just, almost 80% of the residents every day that, that, that do walk to get to campus wind up walking just this ridiculous experience undone, that the sidewalks undone and then on 13th and then crossing Indiana Avenue. It is, it's embarrassing, and it hasn't improved in the 20 years since I last lived in Garden Hill. It hasn't improved one bit. And that's been identified again and again as, as something that needs to be taken care of, and nothing has happened because it's gonna take somewhere between a half million dollars and a million dollars to take care of that stretch of done. And we, allocating $20,000 every year, $50,000 a year, if you're optimistic, I don't know how much money you expect this to raise, it just doesn't even make the slightest dent in that. And it's just ridiculous to give staff this huge overhead to, to monitor such a tiny fund of money and then to coordinate with the neighborhood association. And the neighborhood association is gonna be like, what can we buy with this? And they're just gonna be, you know, they're gonna be flipping through the catalog to be like, well, what costs a pittance when what they have is this half-million-dollar, huge gaping problem undone? And the city needs to solve that problem. The city just needs to solve that problem. Doing anything other than solving that problem is simply wasting time. Like, we can't pretend we're at all serious about transportation if we are not even funding sidewalks undone. That is such a crucial link between literally thousands of units of apartments, including 1,000 units that were approved just last year, specifically because the sidewalks in this neighborhood are so good, when there's not even sidewalk undone. So we just need to do that. And like, having all this overhead debt and administrate such a small fund is not gonna accomplish that. Thanks a bunch, though. I'm real glad you guys are looking at this.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any other comments? Public comment?
I don't see any additional requests to speak.
Okay, any other comments from council members? On this, council member Volan? Could breathe?
Just briefly, and again, I encourage an abstention to anyone tonight, I just want to have the discussion, but, you know, we are going to have organized opposition from neighborhood associations if we touch the neighborhood zone program, guaranteed. If you thought that the, the debate over Plexus was concerning, this one won't be quite as dramatic, but it'll still be there, okay? This is a program that serves core neighborhoods, all right? So there's going to be organized opposition against raising the cost of parking on the street. I think that a parking benefit district will in fact be necessary, but I also think it's good policy, like, you know, the, the, the people in those neighborhoods do have a legitimate concern. You know, the parking should be market, parking, but I do not appreciate the idea that somehow, with all due respect to council member Smith, you know, a neighborhood out like Park Ridge East is going to benefit from sidewalk dollars generated in Garden Hill. I, the, Mr. Alexander is right about the need for sidewalks on 17th undone, but there's a reason they have been built because the money hasn't been there. There's two ways you get that money. You either get a developer who's building new to add it as part of the cost. We, we saw that happen with the CDG project, they're gonna fix 19th Street. 19th Street. I've got it, echo sudden, I've got it. Or, or you start funding it with this, and of course, this is a pittance. Of course, it's a pittance. $12,000 isn't gonna go very far, but it's a demonstration project. If you charge $480 a year and you leave the first 10% to funding the cost of maintaining the program, that's 430-some dollars per permit times 250, that's $100,000 or so. Okay, now we're talking six figures a year from that demand, that will fund sidewalks, okay? This is, if, if we know there's a need in District 6 and we have a specialized way of funding it, it's no skin off of the rest of the city's back to fund it this way. It's money from the district serving the district. So with that, again, I, I don't mind abstentions. I would ask people not to vote no on it, just wanted to have this conversation tonight. And I thank everyone for their time.
Okay, thank you, council member Volan. Any other comments? Since we only did questions earlier, anyone? Okay, I'll just say quickly, you know, I'm, I am for parking benefit districts, and I'm for giving everyone an option to, who lives in a, in a zone, to buy a permit, no matter what kind of home you live in. I'd like to do a little more work on this amendment, though, so I think for now, I will most likely abstain. Okay. Okay, so let's do a roll call here, not roll call, sorry, let's just do a poll to do a recommend, do pass. Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember P. Mont Smith? You are muted.
Abstain.
Okay, and I also will abstain. Okay, so here we, for Amendment 5, we have two yes recommendations and two abstentions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we will move to Amendment 6. I'm sorry I have to be on speaker now, I cannot get my hubs to reconnect.
I'll, I'll second your motion over Amendment 6.
I move Amendment 6, thank you. Okay, so should I pull this up? Let me see, it, this is an amendment that was discussed with me about motorcycle, the definition of motorcycle, as well as the definition of motor-driven cycles. So what, let me see here. Should I share my screen? Because this was sent out late in the day, does it help to share?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Don't share my screen, council member, if you want. I have your amendment.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, thank you. That'll be easier for me so I can see people.
Who, who, can I ask who sent Amendment 6 out? I'm trying to find it in my email.
Steven sent.
This was.
Sent it in the.
Packet addendum.
The.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, around 4:45, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, so this, this amends the motorcycle parking restrictions by adding in two new definitions. So in the original amendment earlier tonight, well, the original ordinance, we talked about motorcycles and mopeds, and mopeds, but it, in the Indiana Code, the Indiana Code talks about motorcycles and then motor-driven cycles. And what I'd like to do is just have our Bloomington Code mirror the Indiana Code on these different types of scooters and motor-driven cycles. So I think this is important because, you know, folks who have scooters or mopeds in town, you have to write, register them at the BMB or DMV, and so they use the Indiana Code to know if they have a Class A motor-driven cycle or a Class B motor-driven cycle. And so I think it makes a lot of sense just for our code to match up with the state code with these definitions. And in the previous ordinance changes, moped wasn't defined. So this really helps people with different types of motor-driven cycles know where they are allowed to park, right, and know where they cannot park. So this was, I just, we just sent this out today, so it is relatively new, but also relatively minor. I sent it to staff, and if they want to weigh in on this, that, well, I would like to go to them just to get their opinion. So I'm not sure who would comment on this.
Sure, this is Pat Rosenbarger, cleaning staff. We had seen a draft of this earlier and then got to review it briefly today. We also asked our Title 15 attorney, Barbara McKinney, to take a look. She was okay with it. So other than that this includes the inaccurate UDO code reference, we are supportive. That's good.
Thank you very much. And we, we have that other amendment that changes the code in this, so I think that they'll make one wonderful change together. So, okay, so I'd like to take council member questions here about this amendment. Councilmember Volan?
Just to, for clarity, a Class 1 bike parking facility is like a locker, like for long-term parking. Class 2 is like a bike rack?
That's my understanding. I think staff could answer that as well. Oops, oh, am I unmuted? You're unmuted.
Sorry, I clicked something a little odd. Yes, that's correct understanding. We consider this a short-term parking. Class 2 is short-term, so the U-racks that you see around town and sometimes the U-racks in Corral and so forth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to point out a, a change in this amendment. It is that if you look at letter E, the original amendment said no person shall park a motorcycle or moped on a Class 2 bicycle parking facility. But we got rid of the word moped, I just want to make sure everyone is aware of this, and said this restriction, so no person shall park a motorcycle on a Class 2 bicycle parking facility, and then this restriction does not apply to a Class A or B motor-driven cycle. So this is saying that the little scooters, like the Vespas and mopeds, so bikes with little bikes that look with pedals and motors can be parked at the U-lock. This, this was asked for by some folks who drive mopeds and Vespas because these are, these are very small vehicles that can easily be stolen and they need, need to be locked up, and people who drive them try to park in high-visibility spaces, and this would allow them then to park somewhere right on the street, like outside of restaurants and things, where people can see their vehicle and where they can lock it up. So that is a little different here. These vehicles also don't tend to weigh very much, so it's my understanding that they can lock up to U-lock and other bike racks in a way that doesn't damage that infrastructure. Other council comments? Councilman comments? Comments from staff?
Wait, I don't think you're seeing me for some reason.
Oh, you're right, I couldn't, I'm sorry.
I'm like waving around.
Ma, okay, I'm sorry, Isabel. Ma, okay, I'm sorry, Isabel. I'm sorry, you can just, you can, okay, yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, I, I think the biggest change here is something you haven't even mentioned, and that's that, uh, letter D is crossed out so that, um, motorcycles or mopeds could park in a regular vehicle parking space in a garage. Taking up a whole parking space, which is not very efficient in my view. Um, did staff, uh, consult with, uh, Michelle Wall or, uh, anybody who, who works in the parking garages, uh, to, to get their view on this? Or did you, uh, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Well, um, what I did was send the amendment to staff and they just said they were on board with the changes. So that is what I did. Um, I, I, I liked that change because as far as I know, motorcycles don't pay a lower rate to park in a garage and then restricting them to only a few spots doesn't seem fair to me. Um, I also like the idea. Um, I mean, multiple motorcycles can park in one spot, so that, they tend to park next to each other, um, because like if they're, if they're riding with friends or something, they, they share spots on a regular basis, I would say. I guess I would also say because our garages have historically never been full. I am not worried, like even with the Fourth Street Garage being gone, right, our garages are nowhere near full. Um, I'm not worried that we have a shortage of parking. Does staff wants to weigh in?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith question?
Hi, yes, this is Beth Rosenbarger. Um, I didn't notice that part of the change, so thank you. And I, so because Michelle Wall is out, she didn't get a chance to review it since it came in today. Um, Rayanne Cox is on this call and Rayanne, would you, um, be able to weigh in on this and the change about motorcycle parking?
I can't weigh in on the garage. I don't have anything to do with the garages. That would be a Michelle question. I think you should get her input on this.
And Rayanne, do you? If I guess a moped is allowed at a bike rack, but a motorcycle is not, does that, if mopeds are lighter, does that achieve what you were hoping to achieve? Because this change did originate from parking enforcement in order to be able to actually, um, enforce some parking we thought was illegal, but then dug into code and it was a gray area. So yeah, Rayanne, can you weigh in on that part too?
I think mopeds would be okay. Motorcycles are a bigger, um, vehicle and they're, they just take up more room and it should be for smaller vehicles. Like mopeds and bicycles. We're promoting that kind of a transportation around town, so parking a motorcycle in there is not my opinion. It just takes up too much room.
Okay, Councilmember Volan? You're on mute.
Thank you. I'm scrambling to find the, uh, in state code, the exact dimensions of the definition of motor driven cycle. Um, and I'm not succeeding. In particular, what I'm looking for is, should I assume that all the vehicles that we're talking about that should be allowed to park? And let's call it bicycle parking, uh, are ones that do not require a license to be operated on city streets? Like a motorcycle?
Yes.
Is there any vehicle that does require licensing? That would be allowed to park at a class two facility?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them in there, no.
Well, it's, I, I don't either. I'm just trying to determine whether that's what this code, this new ordinance proposes.
Yes, I believe so.
So now as you're saying that a moped does not require a license and it could park there, a motorcycle does require a license and it should not be able to park there.
There are different, there are different sizes of mopeds. Uh, this, it depends on the CCs.
Forty-nine C C. How about motor wattage if it's an electric bike that can go twenty-eight miles an hour? It's still, it's a class three pedelec. Which is, you know, sort of like a moped. But, uh, it, they don't measure output in CCs, they measure it in watts. Do I have to worry about a bike that has a motor on it being classified? Okay, okay.
So, no, electric bikes are excluded from the definition of motor driven cycle in Indiana code.
Really? Huh. All right, thank you.
And.
One other clarification, or Steven?
All right, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think class A motor driven cycles do require insurance and a license. So class B motor driven cycles do not. Those are the ones that have to have a max engine displacement of fifty CCs. And, um, but class A can be a little larger as my understanding, and they are defined by having a max horsepower of five. If this is all a little confusing to me, but, um, those you need a license and registration. So it's, um, it's mostly, um, that is just a, a five horsepower means it's like not a big vehicle and it cannot go like anywhere near a motorcycle. So that's like, it's fast. So that's like distinguishing a scooter from a motorcycle. And so a scooter or moped could fall into either one of these categories, class A or class B. Depending on the max engine displacement.
A scooter as in a Vespa or a scooter as in, uh, a Lime? Two wheeled scooter. Okay, thank you.
I just did a Google search and both class A and class B motor driven cycles have to have license and registration. So.
So, okay.
What Mr. Volan was saying is, is not correct. So even when you do need a license, some of those vehicles, you are, according to this amendment, going to be allowed to park in a bike rack.
I wasn't saying it, I was asking.
To me, a license isn't a distinction that matters. It's about the size, right, of the vehicle? And like how much it weighs to park in the, in a bike rack. Um, I think we should check on that. I don't know, Steven, if you have it. I know we're getting into this today, but I am fairly certain you don't need a driver's license for a class B scooter because it tends to be the vehicle of choice if you've had your license taken away. I mean, you still have to title it.
I, I'm happy to provide, uh, more information on, on this before next week's meeting. Um, I do think there are things short of a, a typical driver's license that folks can have, um, to be able to drive the class B, uh, motor driven cycles.
May I just remind my colleagues that we have a whole nother ordinance to discuss tonight?
I know, I know. Yes, okay. Well, if we can, if council is finished with questions, we can go to public comment. Is everyone okay? I can't see Ron, so speak up if you got something. No, okay. Just because we're doing a shared screen. Okay, let's move to council con, or public comment on this. Amendment six, motorcycles and motor driven cycles. Anybody out there want to comment?
From Aibon Binder to comment, who should be unmuted now.
Uh, hi, yeah, my name's Aibon Binder. I'm, I'm actually also a member of the City's Parking Commission. And, uh, I, you know, I confess that when the, the whole list of Title Fifteen changes came before the Parking Commission a few days ago, everything did seem pretty reasonable, but after, um, kind of a second look, I, I admit, I, I do kind of feel like I, I rubber stamped it in retrospect. So I, I do want to speak in support of Councilmember Rosenbarger's changes. Specifically on three points. So the first is that, I, and this point's been raised before, but I, I really, I do want to drive it home. Which is that motor driven cycles are often very lightweight and they are very easy to steal. Um, either just by rolling them away or picking them up and, you know, throwing them in a, a larger vehicle, uh, unless they're secured to something. Um, just like how you would lock up a bicycle. Um, and so in practice, that's kind of just whatever is around, like a, you know, a signpost or a bike rack or, uh, other fixture, but that's not always near a full sized car parking space. So, you know, I, I do certainly think that motorcycles, uh, which are, you know, typically a lot larger in size, would, would not be a good fit for parking in bike racks. Um, I just don't see the issue with motor driven cycles as posing the same issue, given that they are usually a lot smaller. I don't think there are any physical, you know, size dimensions that are defined in law for that. But there are power restrictions and so from a practical standpoint, you know, they tend to be a lot, um, you know, smaller, um, in physical size. Um, so the second issue, um, you, kind of to, to try to specifically, uh, address Councilmember Piedmont Smith's point earlier, um, about the prohibition on motorcycles parking in car spaces in city garages. Um, I, I do want to point out that, you know, most cars that park downtown are only transporting a single person, the, the driver. So, so in either the case of a single occupant car or a motorcycle, using a, a given parking space, the outcome is the same. The space is serving a single individual person. So the, the difference between allowing a motorcycle carrying one person and a car carrying one person, allowing one and not the other, becomes kind of just this sort of very abstract academic exercise. There's no practical reason. If you're talking about moving people, you know, in both cases, the part, the parking space is, is serving one person. And, and I don't think staff is proposing making the garages, uh, carpool only. We're still allowing single occupant vehicles to park in the spaces. And so whether it's a motorcycle or a car, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. One, one is, you know, taking up less physical space, or it could, but I mean, in, in both cases, I mean, you should still have that kind of flexibility. Um, and then the final point I want to make, uh, is just to remind everybody that, you know, of, obviously, city code should align with state laws and definitions. And so as, as it pertains to, uh, you know, the definitions of M D C A and, and B, um, obviously that's a, you know, better choice, uh, of language for the ordinance compared to, uh, you know, something like moped, which isn't defined in, in state law. So, so in general, I, I think that Councilmember Rosenbarger's, uh, amendment is, is, is pretty well thought out here. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Binder. It looks like we have another public comment from.
Yeah, uh, Sam Welsh should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Hi, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Cool, thank you. Um, thanks for letting me speak here. Um, yeah, I just want to speak for a minute about, uh, just as a motorcycle enthusiast, uh, motorcycles in general. That I wish there were more spots around, like, um, it, I don't like parking, taking up a whole spot, but that's kind of what we have to do because as far as I can tell, there's exactly one motorcycle spot around the entire downtown square. Um, and I, I, I do park there. Um, I've often shared it with like two or sometimes even three other motorcycles. So a little goes a long way. Like, we don't need much, but, um, a little bit more spots would be great. And then it gets weird with who pays for the meter and stuff. Um, so yeah, I just think we should have more motorcycle spots in general. That'd be really great. And because when I have parked in normal spots, uh, I've actually had my bike knocked over because they didn't, whoever, I'm assuming they didn't see my bike. So now I have to park it towards the back, uh, so that hopefully people see my bike and don't hit it. So just in general, those are good. Um, I also agree with Aibon's statement, uh, regarding, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Piedmont Smith's statement uh, about, you know, are we going to require everyone else to carpool? They, this, it's hauling the same amount of people, just because we can fit more bikes there or more vehicles there. Well, maybe we should have more motorcycle spots then. Uh, but, so that's, that's that. I think we just need more motorcycle spots in general. Um, sorry, I'm kind of rambling here. Um, and anyway, I would just like to have more spots to encourage motorcycles and mopeds and obviously bicycles, uh, just as a means of transportation. Kind of a small part of the solution to climate change in general. You know, they, they require significantly less fuel consumption to move one around and, uh, they, and a smaller carbon footprint. Um, and even less resources to make them. You know, there's just less metal, less rubber to make this thing. And also, uh, regarding electric motors, like motorcycles are going to be the, are already the place where there are more and more electric options available. So we are going to want to be thinking about that too. Like, um, there's actually uh, an electric Harley Davidson that you're going to want to think about. Like, you probably, that's the size of a Harley Davidson. You don't want to park that electric bike at your electric bicycle rack. But there's lots of other smaller electrical bikes that could fit there that are the size of a moped. So just to be thinking about that. So yeah, that's, sorry, I'm kind of rambling here, but, um, I just, I want, uh, I hope motorcycles are on, on our radar a little bit more. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And up next, we have Joseph, uh, who should be unmuted and ready to go.
Uh, hello, uh, this is Joseph Nycom. Uh, I support the amendment as written. Uh, I believe that it now balances the needs of residents who use motorcycles and motor driven cycles and the burden on the city to accommodate them equitably with other modes of transportation. Uh, in addition, by implementing the state's definitions of M D C A and M D C B, amendment as written provides clarity for enforcement should there be a violation against it. Uh, I also support more dedicated, secure motorcycle parking, both within garages and on surface parking, to avoid utilizing parking infrastructure intended for bicycles. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, I would like to go back to staff. I think Ms. Cox has a comment.
Yes, most of our motorcycle, uh, corrals are on the sidewalks. And in order to get to them, you have to travel on the sidewalks to get to them. So that's another reason not to have a motorcycle flying down the sidewalk is public safety. Uh, a smaller, uh, scooter or moped would be easier to manipulate around foot traffic than have a motorcycle fly down the sidewalk to get to a bike corral. And then another, uh, about motorcycle parking in the garage, um, most of the garage parking is on a slope. And anybody that's ridden a bike or has a bike knows that you need to park them on a flat surface. So I think having designated spaces in the garage would prevent by motorcycle damage and it, it just can't park them on a slope. That's it.
Thank you very much. I just, yeah, I, I see those points definitely. I mean, I would say, I think we should have dedicated motorcycle spots, but also not limit them. If they want to park in regular spots, I think they should get that option as well. Council, comments from council members, thoughts? Concerns, questions? Councilmember Volan, you're muted, okay.
Um, I mean, I'm generally inclined to this amendment. Uh, I have to admit that I still don't quite, I'm not satisfied with my understanding of definitions of terms like motor driven cycle, uh, or that I understand the full dimensions of it, but in general, it, it seems like a, um, an overdue change that would more equitably distribute parking for non-car vehicles, um, you know, starting with motorcycles and working their way down. So, I'm sort of ambivalent whether I'll abstain or vote yes tonight. Like, I, I'm supportive in general. I just want to fully understand the question. But, uh, thanks for the amendment.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I think we can go ahead and do a do pass on this one. So I'll just go ahead, Councilmember Smith? You are muted.
Council, Councilmember Rosenbarger, will you restate what we're voting for after all that discussion?
Sure, yes. We are voting on amendment six and this is, this is defining motor driven cycles, class A and class B. This is saying, it's not for me right a second. This is saying that, um, motor driven cycles can park at bike racks and motorcycles. sorry for me right a second. This is saying that motor driven cycles can park at bike racks and motorcycles cannot park at bike racks. And it is saying that motorcycles can park in any spot in a garage.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I got it there. I don't want to mislead you. I want to make sure I get it all. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Volan?
Abstain.
Okay, and I will be a yes. It's my amendment. So thank you very much. Okay, we are through our Sixth Amendment. So help me out here. I think next what we have is to look at the whole ordinance. Right? And do a discussion on that and and potentially do a, a recommendation, do pass for the entire ordinance. Okay. So do we need to bring it up in a certain way or can I just start discussing it? Steven?
I don't know if staff has anything else to add from, from last week. You may want to ask them if there's anything else they'd like to present, but if not, I would open it up to any additional council questions. Go to the public and then come back to council for a final comment.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. So let's go to staff first to see if there's any additional presentation, overview, update of the, the ordinance in general or Title fifteen update.
I believe we only had those amendments for you to present and we have nothing else to present tonight. If you have any questions about other stuff, other parts of the ordinance, staff happy to answer those.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. The only thing I had thought about is, you know, it's, it's instating the visitor, the temporary visitor permit system, parking permit system. I think we were all pretty on board with that, but I didn't know if anyone wanted to weigh in on it or anything else in the ordinance. So just opening it up for council comment. Councilmember Volan?
I'm glad that, that staff proposed the temporary visitor permit system. I'm ambivalent about the continued existence of the annual visitor permit. But I also think that we may find ourselves adjusting the price of temporary visitor permits too, because it's pretty steep even by my measure. Nevertheless, it's an option that didn't exist before. It's a welcome addition. I'm looking forward to seeing what other people have to say about it, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Other council members? We're going, couch here, it's comment or question. Okay, it's getting late. I am also excited to do the visitor permit system. I like that it's available to anyone, any resident in, in the zone. So it really opens up some options for folks. And I think we could over time, right, look at getting rid of the annual visitor permit. The only thing I would want to ask, but I know Michelle is not here. Are we looking at all at selling booklets of visitor permits? I think, and maybe that would be something we want to do next year, but I think that would be a way to get rid of the annual so that people still have the convenience of potentially buying ten, you know, five or 10 visitor permits. And like, once they write the date on it, stick it in their window, they wouldn't be able to use that again, kind of thing. They wouldn't have to come to City Hall every time they get a, they need a visitor permit for someone. So I could see something like that being good down the road. It's okay for not now though, I think, just a thought. Okay, any other council comments on the entire ordinance? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, for the temporary visiting visitor permits, it says any, any resident in the zone can apply for such a permit depending on availability. So is the number going to be limited?
I think this is a question from Ms. Cox. I think might have gone through this last.
I can provide an answer, I think. Actually, Michelle should speak for that and Ryan Cox can also speak for that, but I think the main reason was that it's the first year of this permit. And I think the parking services wants to evaluate the needs and because if they, if they oversold the zone, it may cause some problems. So this section can provide parking services director to decide, for example, how many permits they have sold and control the numbers and have some kind of limits of that. But Ryan can provide, Ryan Cox can provide more information, I believe.
No, that's, that's.
Ms. Cox, you muted yourself.
Yes, he's right. We're going to see how many are sold to see, you know, how it works.
Thank you.
Clerk Bolden, did you want to weigh in as well?
I was just going to add some more context, but that's fine.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, other council questions, comments on the ordinance? Did you raise your hand? Okay, Councilmember Volan?
A short comment. What Ms. Cox just said underscores the effort I made with Amendment Five, which is we don't know the demand until we're going to see what the demand is. That's why I urge consideration of that permit in the same way. That's why I support both of those permits. Thanks.
Thank you. Council comments. Okay, I think we can open it up to the public for comments on Ordinance twenty dash twelve, mending, updating Title fifteen, traffic and vehicles. Ms. Alexander?
Mr. Alexander, who is now unmuted.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
Thanks. This is Greg Alexander here again. I really respect your stamina. I, I'm interested in Section ten, which removes a few streets from, it's called Schedule I, and it's basically there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit around the city and this lists streets that have exceptions to that. And there, I looked at the original schedule. It has, if I counted correctly, 55 street segments that are above that 25 miles an hour. That means that the, the, the existing Title fifteen specifies that the speed limit is going to be above 25 miles an hour. And that's a concern to me. The, the transportation plan calls for every street in the city having a speed limit below 25 miles an hour, except for three. And those three are the, the State Road forty-five, forty-six bypass, State Road four forty-six over on the east side. And both of those are, are indot, so we don't need to be concerned with them in local ordinance, as I understand it. And then the, the other is, is Walnut north of the bypass. But every other street in the city is supposed to be a speed limit 25 or below, according to our transportation plan. And I, I, I assume that staff had that in mind when they recommended reducing the speed limit on, on the five segments they've identified. And so I'm really excited that they're beginning to do that, but we could just get rid of that whole list. Everything that's over 30 miles an hour or higher could just be removed from that list today. And it wouldn't take legal effect until, you know, until Public Works gets around to replacing all the, the different street signs. But we could send that signal. There's no reason that staff has to lead and council has to follow. Council could lead on this and then staff could follow. And this is important because every time like some little thing shows up, like on Rogers, we've added bike lanes in different segments, piecemeal over the last about eight years. There's been a crossing at Rogers at Fourth Street as one independent project. There's a school zone project at Eighth Street where my kids go to school at Fairview Elementary. And that's pursued as an independent project. So each one of these little projects, they don't ask the question, should we reduce the speed limit on the whole corridor of Rogers, which, you know, in order to improve safety for, in order to install a bike lane, you have to decrease the speed limit. That's the most important thing for bicycle safety. In order to install the school zone crossing, you have to decrease the speed limit. And so ironically, as they installed the school zone crossing, they actually installed brand new, high visibility, 30 mile an hour speed limit signs one block away from the school. And that defeats the purpose, you know, they should just, when they, when they have this, they shouldn't ask, will we ever reduce the speed limit? They should know, yes, we are going to reduce the speed limit. Make that decision for them, make it easy for them, so they don't have to go and try to justify it and do a traffic study to justify it. And reexamine the whole corridor from, from, you know, Clear Creek on up. Just say, all these speed limits will now be 25 miles an hour. And I mean, we, we really should go a lot further, but, but it's going to be complicated, you know. But the new traffic plan says a lot of street typologies should be 20 miles an hour. And it would be nice if that was, you know, happening on a quicker time scale. Obviously, that's going to be more work. But it's just so easy to, you just identify the ones that are 30 or 40 miles an hour. And we can just strike those from the list right away because there's no reason for any car anywhere in the city to be going 30 or 40 miles an hour. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments in the ordinance? What comments? Okay. Back to council for final comment here. Okay. Let's do a do pass recommendation, right, on Ordinance twenty dash twelve. Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, yes. Okay. Okay, so that wraps up our first order of business here. Let's move in to, I guess I just didn't wrap that up. It's four yeses on that. Thanks. Okay, so let's move into the seven line, right? Do we have a time limit on this? We just get to go forever here as long as we want?
We're the last meet, we're the last committee of the night. We didn't advertise a stop time. But I don't know if anybody wants to stay much longer. I mean, generally speaking, 11 o'clock is a goal.
Right. And well, we didn't have a lot of council questions ahead of time on this, so maybe we might get it done. Okay. So now we've got, let me pull up everything here. We've got our second order of business here. Ordinance twenty dash fourteen. This is to reflect a proposed redesign of Seventh Street. So again, changing our favorite Title fifteen in the Bloomington Municipal Code. I think we have Beth Rosenbarger here to present on this and answer questions as well as Neil Copper. Thanks, everyone for sticking around until 10:32 to get this going. So first I'll open it up to staff to do your thing, a little presentation, a little overview, whatever you'd like. Answering questions right off the bat.
Hi, this is Beth Rosenbarger. Obviously, there are more people on this call. Out of the council members here, how many of you have seen the presentation about the seven line already?
One, two, three, and I'm pretty sure Councilmember Volan has as well. Okay, all of us.
Okay. Let's do this. So I was planning to do an overview of the project first because it does address some questions. Basically, I like to start over here at the B line on the western side of the project and move east. And I wanted to look at the project first and then talk about why second. And I can go as fast, I can try to go super fast, but I also want to kind of make clear this is a big project. I think it's a really exciting project. And I know it's 10:30 at night, so I don't want me moving quickly to kind of feel like it's getting short shrift, you know?
Yeah, you know what? Government takes no breaks, so just take all the time you need. We don't even know what sleep is. So feel free.
So this is from the Parking Commission presentation, so Councilmember Volan will be familiar. Basically, why we're here is this is the city's second protected bike lane project. This is the first protected bike lane project where we are also asking to remove on-street parking. And we are asking to modify some stop signs along the route. Those are the two bigger requests that have implications for Title fifteen. So that's why we're here. We want to get approval in order to move forward with the design of this project. Basically, if, if there, if the parking removal cannot be approved, the project can't move forward. So we wanted to bring this to council now and, you know, get that conversation going. Since we want to finish the design and get construction bid for the project this fall to be constructed summer 2021. That's next summer. Okay, so on the left side of the screen, we see the proposal includes adding an east-west stop sign on Seventh Street and removing the B line stop sign. I have all the measurements in here. I'm not going to read them, but if you have questions about them, I can address them at some point. At the intersection with Morton and Seventh, the proposal to remove the east-west stop sign. If there are specific questions about the stop signs, I think Neil Copper will be best to answer those. There was a traffic analysis study done on this corridor. And I think most people would be surprised that Seventh Street carries more volume already than, than any of the cross streets where we are requesting to remove stop signs. You also see a range crossing here. That's exciting. That's raised for the bike, bike lane and the pedestrians. Happy to talk about how that improves safety. In the next block, from Morton to College Avenue, you'll see throughout this corridor, the two-way protected bike lane is on the south side of the street. And what makes it protected is that there are physical barriers along, along the corridor between the bicycle facility and motor vehicle traffic. In this block, it would be reconfiguring the angled parking to have parallel parking in this section here. And there's one loading zone space that is used quite frequently, we're, we're, we think by the hotel. And that loading zone space would remain. In addition, the changes at the College Avenue intersection are some protected corners here as well as a bicycle signal. None of that is part of the Title fifteen change at this moment. In the next block from College to Walnut, like the other block, starting in this block, there's no on-street parking at all. Currently, there's on-street parking on the north side and the south side of this street. One question that I received from Councilmember Piedmont Smith was, does this remove ADA spaces and what is the plan for that? The proposal impacts four ADA spaces along the corridor. I know two of them are in this block. One of them is in a place where it could be put just with the reconfigured parking. And the others, we would look at just a location very nearby on a cross street to add a new ADA space for the ones that are being removed. So we'll continue moving east. In the next block from Walnut Street to Washington Street, this, no, we see this, I'll do it without, on the south side of the street still. Currently, there's some parking in this block as well in existence. This has a nice wider median. We see trees along there. One question was what will be in the median? And I failed to create a list of all the options, but there are multiple options. We do know we want to put trees in, anywhere we can put trees in. They help provide shade and they help reduce stormwater impacts because they capture stormwater. We could use pavers because they're lower maintenance. We are also working with CBU to look at green stormwater infrastructure options. And if that would be in some of the medians or at a different location. Another question was about the bus stops and, and bus zones in code. So this is one of the bus stops. This is a floating bus island. And also the tool design memo noted two things, that a driveway at the southeast corner of Washington would be removed in order to accommodate the bus stop. That was wrong in that it meant the southwest. And then it turned out being wrong and that we're not proposing removing it because of the amount of reconfiguring that would have to happen in that parking lot. So there are four current bus stops along this corridor on the south side. This plan combines two of those and results in three floating bus stops. They are all different lengths, but the design is similar in that each of them has a raised, well, sort of bicycle speed bump that bicyclists will have to go through in order to be alerted of the conflict and to yield to pedestrians. And then they are all curb height as well, so it makes for faster and easier boarding and alighting on buses. In the next block. In the next block, just a pretty typical cross section here, there are some breaks in the barrier for driveways and alleys. This shows these driveways is closed and that is not, that's not worked out yet. We are working directly, there are only three properties where we are proposing to change or eliminate driveways on Seventh. And we are working directly with the property, the property owner or their representative in certain cases. So this, next to First Presbyterian Church, they have three parking lot entrances is one place where we're working with that property. We honestly haven't, we're circling back with them soon and proposing one option. They will more than likely still have at least one driveway opening onto Seventh Street. But we are just trying to work with them to make sure it can still achieve what they want from their parking areas while trying to really minimize the number of cuts and the width of cuts along the corridor to focus on improving safety and comfort as well. I think that answered another council question. So we'll continue as we move east. This block, this is another one of the driveways. You might see over on the left that I'm working with that property owner to see if it's feasible to close or relocate. And I think nothing major of note that we received questions on here. This block is the Poplar's Building at IU. We see another bus stop here. So floating bus stops in code, the reason bus zones are codified is because you have to delineate curb space where there is existing on-street parking and clarify that must codify that other private vehicles can't park in that space and that it's for buses. In terms of when the bus stops in the street for boarding, we do not have that in code. And I would say the answer to that is just, it's a policy decision. They could be in code, they aren't in code. There are five hundred bus stops, so that would be great as a map if it were to be in code, I would say, instead of a table. But that, let me know if you have more questions on that one. I forgot to mention the stop signs as we traveled through, I'm sorry. So with the exception of the two signalized intersections, College Avenue and Walnut, each intersection since then, Washington, Lincoln, Grant, and now Dunn, the proposal is to remove the east-west stop signs and keep the north-south stop signs. In most cases, they're a one-way street, so just obviously the stop sign being on the side that has traffic. So this next block, Dunn to Indiana, is where the design changes because the amount of available right-of-way changes. So the median gets much narrower. It is still a physical barrier, like a raised curb here, but there's not the flexibility to put trees or something within that space. And the same as we continue east until we get to Woodlawn. There was a comment at the public, at the public meeting we held about how would you move from the bike lane if you wanted to turn north onto Fester Park or turn from one of those onto the bicycle facility? We're checking out the design to probably add some brakes in the barrier to facilitate that movement as well. And then, once we get to the intersection with Woodlawn, this is a bus stop that can accommodate two buses. Maybe I should ask Neil to correct me if it's actually three. And so this one is the one that was being combined with a bus stop that was closer to Park Avenue. And we've worked with Bloomington Transit on this project. They are completely on board and were supportive of combining these bus stops as well. At Woodlawn Avenue, sadly for now, the project ends and the street transitions to IU property. So I think I'll briefly cover the why because it's fun. So the real question, I like this chart a lot. It takes a minute to take it in, but it's basically if we're, when we talk about transportation, we're talking about moving people through space and also being in space. But when we look at one lane width of a ten-foot lane and look at how efficiently you can move people in that space, the chart at the top shows that private motor vehicles, you could like move six hundred to sixteen hundred per hour, depending on factors. Mixed traffic would be private vehicles with buses is a thousand to twenty-eight hundred per hour. A two-way protected bike lane is seventy-five hundred people per hour. And that is what we're proposing here, the two-way bike lane, that is mostly ten feet or more. A dedicated transit lane, it's four thousand to eight thousand. And a super efficient use of space is a sidewalk, which is ten feet of sidewalk, which you could say is also on this corridor because we have five feet on both sides, is nine thousand people per hour. So understand we are asking to remove on-street parking, but in terms of a corridor and the ability to move people, I think this project has a dramatic impact on the ability, the number of people who can move on Seventh Street, both in a safe and more comfortable way. So when we consider that it has sidewalk on both sides of the street, a two-way protected bike lane and mixed traffic with frequent buses, it'll be a very efficient corridor in terms of multimodal transportation. And I think that is, especially due to having the bike, protected bike lanes, that will be unique for our city. In terms of public transit use, this is a really high transit use corridor. There are four bus routes that travel along here, ten bus stops, which with our combination of two stops would become nine. There are almost three hundred bus trips a day and about thirty-four hundred passenger rides per day pre-COVID. And the buses have five to ten minor collisions every year. The main reason they have these collisions is because of adjacent on-street parking. Narrow lanes are really great for slowing traffic, but they are not great for buses, which are larger when they're adjacent to a vertical barrier, like a parked car. It makes it really challenging for the buses. If the lane is narrow with a curb, but not with something vertical next to it, like a parked car, if they aren't those, the buses can deal with narrow lanes still because it's their mirrors that are the main issue. So multiple questions on parking. There are currently a hundred and twenty-one metered parking spaces on the street. We're requesting to remove one hundred and thirteen of those metered spaces. In twenty nineteen, those one hundred and twenty-one meters generated a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue. I'm going to go through these numbers fast, but, you know, feel free to ask me questions. So based on a hundred and twenty-one meters for a year and the total amount of revenue possible, the meters generated revenue thirty-five percent of the time. In parking, in like typical parking best practice, which is more about managing parking and I would say less about climate change goals, parking best practices aim to have parking utilized eighty-five percent of the time. We do know that in twenty nineteen, the combo zone was in effect until August and it applied to fifty-five of the meters. The combo zone was where if you had a neighborhood parking zone permit, you could park at a meter without paying. So some spaces were taken up until August, assuming by people with a neighborhood zone that were not paying a meter. Council member Volan requested more data about it. It's my next slide, though. And just to clarify, in addition to the metered spaces, there's one block of zone parking that accommodates about thirteen vehicles. Based on that, it's about two hundred and sixty-five feet long. Dunn Street, we are adding eleven metered spaces and thirty-three zone spaces with a recent Title fifteen change to add parallel parking to that street. So Michelle Wall did get this data pulled from IPS and Park Mobile. So a quick summary is that IPS is a meter data. Park Mobile only goes by the block, so it has to be, it's combined thing. And to compare when the zone, when the combo zone, where people were allowed to park at a meter with their neighborhood permit to when they weren't allowed to. If we look at this, twenty eighteen, five-month total was sixty-two thousand dollars. And then twenty nineteen, the five-month total was sixty-six thousand, five hundred and change. So the difference in those five months from the year where the combo zone applied to the year where it didn't was four thousand, four hundred, forty-five dollars, give or take. So I can also talk about why we build protected bike lanes. Mainly, when we think of people driving, there, we build one type of thing and we understand how to build something for driving. But when we look at people bicycling, there are lots of different user groups. So this, they actually usually talk about a one percenter, which is somebody who is probably a rider with the Bloomington Bicycle Club, who will be verifying biking on almost anything. The highly confident is the user group we've basically captured with the infrastructure that we have in Bloomington. This means you'll bike sometimes on bike lanes or without a bike lane, on slower streets and things like that. But what we want to capture with our infrastructure are people who are interested but concerned. And when you build for this user group, the rest of those users are also comfortable and accommodated. And that would be best described by somebody biking with a child, somebody who doesn't want to bike next to moving motor vehicles, which is a pretty rational concern, and people who will bike on the B-line but won't bike anywhere else in town. This is the basics of what a protected bike lane looks like, but since we've gone over our project, I'll just say it's a sidewalk, a space separating the sidewalk from the bike lane. We've got the bike lane, a physical separator, and then the space where cars also move. A really important thing to note about protected bike lane facilities is they improve safety on the street for all users. So over here in this little blue box, we can see that protected bike lanes have been shown to reduce serious injury and fatality collisions for people biking by ninety percent and reduce fatalities for all road users by forty-four percent. And I think a lot of this comes from separating the modes and creating conditions where people drive more slowly and safely. Also, there's a benefit to pedestrians by separating people bicycling. When people feel unsafe, they bike on the sidewalk. So when we see people biking on the sidewalk, it's usually not because they want to be there, but because they feel unsafe or uncomfortable with their other options. Again, this accommodates micro mobility, so I keep saying bike lane, but people in scooters can use this. And then it frees up the sidewalk for people walking with strollers or just walking and want to be not encountering people on bike. Why is it on the south side of the street? There are fewer cross streets, there were fewer bus stops, it's a direct connection to campus, and it minimizes the drainage impact. Because when you start looking at drainage and curbs, projects get more expensive. So also, the project works within the existing curbs and mostly just adds the median along with other changes. But we, for the most part, are not touching the outer curbs on the street. So you see this designed throughout the project. This is called a protected corner. And the reason it's a great benefit is it improves safety for all users within intersections. When you're a driver and there's no corner, you take a right turn at a, how would that be? I want to say sharper angle, but it's very hard as the driver to look over your back shoulder and try to look for someone in a bicycle lane. In designs like this, it puts you more at almost ninety degrees to the bicycling crosswalk and to the pedestrian crosswalk. So the bicycles have greater visibility to drivers and drivers are easier to see much more. Raised crossings also make people more visible. Finally, don't forget about those great comprehensive plan goals that were adopted. So increasing sustainability, improve public transit, improve the bicycle and pedestrian network, prioritize non-automotive modes, protect neighborhood streets, optimize public space for parking, and educate the public. In the memo, I described, I think, how this project touches on a lot of these goals. And while I think, I would argue this project is optimizing public space for parking because we know this parking is underutilized and there could be a more efficient use for this space. The Trade District Garage will, plans to come online in spring twenty twenty-one. This project, the plan is to construct in summer twenty twenty-one. While sometimes those are kind of considered different user groups, a garage is still adding inventory to the parking system. Okay, and then Neil, do you want to, let me see if there were any questions? Estimated completion date, turning movements? Okay, oh, the estimated cost of the project is two million dollars. And for the meter data, I can send the spreadsheets if you want as well. They're not that fun, but sometimes you want to see that. Neil, would you like to talk about turning movements?
Yeah, Neil Copper, planning transportation. I'll try to share my screen real quick. Right, so the question was, how do you make a turn from the two-way protected bike lane? There's actually a, I have a lot to go through with that answer. I'll try to go through it pretty quickly, but let me know if you have questions. So there's two reasons, two primary reasons where you might ask that question. One is because of the physical separation. So instead of being a traditional bike lane, just paint on the ground, you have a physical barrier separating the bike lane and the motor vehicle lanes. So how's that come into play? And then the second aspect is because it's a two-way facility, so you have bicycles going in what we would think of as the opposite direction on that side of the road. So I'm going to start with a question about the physical barrier. So on my screen is a graphic, this is from a publication out of New York City, but it describes kind of your standard, what they call vehicular style turn that a bicycle might make. In the image that you see, obviously making a right-hand turn is pretty straightforward, I'm not going to go into that. Making a left-hand turn, in a traditional bicycle lane, you would merge into traffic, merge into the left turn lane and then follow the signal and stop sign or whatever, whatever it was you needed to follow. With a physically protected bike lane, that can be more challenging to do because there's a physical barrier there. It can still be possible, of course, if you choose to exit the protected bike lane in an alley or a driveway or something. And experienced users may do that. But in general, what you would do, this next graphic, what they call, here they're calling it a pedestrian-style turn. Commonly, it's referred to as a two-stage turn because you're making the turn in two different stages. So you actually act as though you're going straight through the intersection, stop on the far side of the intersection and turn. And then you wait for the green light or wait for your turn if it's a stop sign. And so instead of merging with traffic, you do this type of turn. You can do this, whether it's a physically protected bike lane or not. Often, a less experienced cyclist will be more comfortable doing this turn, even from a traditional bike lane or without a bike lane present. In order to make this, this kind of movement more intuitive and to help with kind of education on that front, it's common to do what's called a two-stage turn cue box. So in this image you see, it's basically just painting a box on the ground, showing a cyclist where they might wait in order to make that two-stage turn. This image is just a one-way protected bike lane, but I thought it showed it pretty well. You basically find a spot for that box that is out of the flow of other bicyclists and also out of the flow of conflicting motor vehicles. And it's a clear spot for you to wait where you're going to make your turn. This is just an image on the Seventh Street proposal between College and Walnut. So if you look at the Walnut intersection, you can see in between, if you're going eastbound as a bicycle, there are places where you could pull to the right or to the left. We can put a two, plan to put two-stage turn cue boxes there to show where you would wait as a cyclist in order to make that turn. One of the, some of the comments we got after that public meeting was that those weren't shown on these graphics and we are planning to flesh that out further and give some of that guidance. In the opposite direction, if you're, so in this graphic, you're a westbound cyclist, you kind of, what you might kind of what you might think of as on the wrong side of the street. It's the same general concepts. So if you are westbound and you're making a left turn, it's relatively simple. You're, you're crossing the opposite direction of bicycles, but otherwise it's similar that you're going straight across the intersection. And then if you're making a right turn as a westbound cyclist, it's similar to the two stage turn where you actually turn and stop, except that you don't have to cross the intersection first. You would just pull straight into that two-stage turn cue box. I also want to point out that anyone who's ridden a bicycle on a, one of the multi-use paths we have in town, this is basically the same thing that you would do if you're riding on a multi-use path. Those are two-way facilities on one side of the street, except we're trying to give a bit more definition here. And then, you know, the, some of the other differences between a multi-use pass, it is, of course, you're not mixing with pedestrians while you're doing it, and you're arguably more visible as you're kind of in the roadway. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. We, staff is finished. We'll go to council, council question? Councilmember Volan?
I have one question. When will traffic counts be done after the project is done so we can see the difference in not just car but bike and maybe even pedestrian traffic on the seventh line?
So we actually have, we have existing permanent bicycle counters on Seventh Street east of Indiana. So that would be, we'll reinstall that after the project, and that would be an ongoing count for bicyclists. That does not count pedestrians. Pedestrians are more challenging to count, and it also doesn't count motor vehicles. We have, we have data on the street from our before condition. You know, typically after a project like this, you wait at least six months to let people get accustomed to the new configuration and change their travel habits, things like that. So I don't have an exact date of when we would get counts, but we would definitely want to evaluate it.
But the key thing is that you will be doing those counts.
Yeah, we would.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Other council question?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Looks like a great project.
Thank you, Ron.
We should go to the public first, I think.
Thanks. I know, right? I know. What was that? Okay. We'll go to the public for a comment on, or, it looks like we have Greg Alexander so far. Okay. Greg, well, unmute you. Looks like we're off that.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander again. I just want to say, I know you all are used to a lot of negativity from me, but this project is awesome. It's, it's everything that our side paths aren't. In our side paths, we, we resolutely, you know, what makes those inexpensive, the reason we have them is that we don't re-engineer the intersections. We don't even re-engineer the driveway crossings, and it's, it's really dangerous, but on, it's actually more dangerous than riding a bicycle in the street, which is blabbergasting for me. But this project is the exact opposite. The, the intersections are meticulously engineered. And even, I, you know, I have some reservations, obviously, but overall, this is just, this is fantastic. I'm so excited to see this. I have been waiting 10 years for, for good design to start coming out of the city engineering staff, and this is a good design. And this is made possible, I think, by the, the transportation plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. Any other public comments? Comments from the public? Okay.
We, we do have a request from Aobon.
Oh, right.
Should be.
Okay, go ahead.
Ready to go.
Everybody, Aobon Binder again here. Well, I want to echo Greg, of course, about how just overall, this project is great. It's, it's certainly a very ambitious project, and I'm very excited to see how it turns out. I, I think it is important to get all of the details right in the design of this project. The devil's really in the details and, and, and design details can, can really matter a lot in terms of safety and usability and how intuitive the whole system is to use. And, and so I, I just want to just make one comment about the, the eastern end of this project where it transitions to university property. And, and I, I think that there are probably still some design changes that, that, you know, should, should be looked at, possible design changes, particularly, you know, when, when you have this, this kind of, I don't even know what to really call it because it's not a really, it's not a standard kind of bike facility, but it's, it's sort of a on-street bike lane that crosses diagonally across the intersection. And I, I not only don't think, I, I not only don't think that a lot of people will necessarily be comfortably using that, at least as it's intended, but also it just introduces a lot of potential for conflict between all the, all the different modes. I mean, pedestrian, bicycle, all the buses, of course, other, other motor traffic, because it is such a, I guess you might say, unique kind of facility or unique kind of design. I, I don't think it's very intuitive to use because cyclists going westbound from the north side of the street, transitioning to the south side of the street to the two-way path, sort of have to plunge headlong into the intersection into oncoming traffic. And I mean, if, if I were using this facility, I, I don't know if I would think, oh, I, I sort of need to treat this like I'm turning left because I'm crossing into the path of oncoming traffic, so I need to like signal left as if I'm turning left, but I'm not really turning left, I'm just going straight. And, you know, I, I don't think that's going to be very clear for, for anybody, you know, to, to really know what to do based solely on having the green, you know, dashed paint on the ground and stop signs. Because I, I just don't think that either of those types of intersection treatments are really intended for this kind of, this kind of intersection where you are transitioning between, you know, traffic on both sides of the street to bicycle traffic on one side. So I would really encourage staff to look at like international best practices because this type of intersection, you know, we're, we're obviously not the first ones doing this kind of intersection. There are many examples around the world. You know, it's cities across, across the world where you are transitioning between those, those two types of like cycle tracks or, or bike paths or, or bike lanes. And, you know, some of them involve kind of doing a whole sort of protected intersection where you're, where you have a kind of two-stage turn process built into the intersection. I mean, that's, that's certainly how, like, you know, a lot of like Western European countries would probably design this intersection. There's probably other ways to do it too. Maybe, maybe relocating the transition altogether just outside of the intersection so that you're not having all of these different conflict, conflict points introduced right at the point where people are trying to just continue going straight. But, but what I, that's, that's kind of really mainly what I'm concerned about with this project is, is just that, that, that is such an important connection point, you know, because it's, it's where, it's where users of this, of the seventh line are going to be either entering or exiting campus. And I think the point where people are going to be leaving campuses is also just, you know, that tends to be at just a high, really high-traffic, high-conflict area. So everything that we can possibly do to reduce conflict and improve safety, you know, particularly at that Woodburn intersection, I think, would be really helpful. But, you know, again, overall, I think the general overall design of this project is great. I think it's, you know, for the most part, it's very well thought out. But I, I would really please strongly urge staff to do some more attention, give some more attention to the, the east end of this project. And, you know, hopefully, I mean, you know, within the next few months, maybe IU will budge and, you know, there'll be, you know, different, different ways to kind of approach that than, than having this kind of rough transition. But, you know, in lieu of that, I, I hope that, that, that the other plans can be made for, for smoothing that out. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Looks like that's it. Okay, we'll go back to council for comment. Any other questions? Final thoughts? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, just very briefly, I think this is a really exciting project, and I really would like to wholeheartedly thank Beth Rosenbarger for her presentation because she answered all of my questions in the course of her presentation. So I really appreciate that.
That's really great. Submitting questions early, it's useful. We're doing great. Okay, councilmember Volan, you're muted.
Just want to say it's unprecedented, it's exciting, and it's overdue. Very happy to vote for it. I do agree with Mr. Binder's concern about the interface at the east end of the project. There's got to be a way we can maybe redesign a better bike box to make that transition better, but otherwise, I can't wait to see this thing in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to this kind of project becoming precedent. You know what I'm saying? Okay, any other comment? Okay, I think we can do, do a do-pass recommendation here. Okay, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, yes. Okay, those four yes, guesses, and we'll send that back to council next week. Okay. So where are we? I think we can just say wrap this up. Yes. Okay, wonderful. So thanks, everyone, for coming. We will consider this adjourned and see everyone, who knows when. Okay. Bye. Thanks for being. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.